All right, we call the meeting to order. If you please rise for your pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You please remain standing. We have an invocation by Mr. Marshall.
Would you bow with me in prayer, please? Our gracious heavenly Father, we come to you in the name of your son and through his finished work on our behalf. We come before you not simply because this invocation is on the meeting agenda, but in light of the reality that is on the agenda, because these governing officials need your enabling spirit and power to rest upon them, to fulfill what you have appointed them to do. As you have told us in John 15, verse 5, "I am the vine, you are the branches; those who remain in me and I in them will produce much fruit, for apart from me you can do nothing." Lord, the recent assassination of Charlie Kirk reminds us that none of us know the time of our departure. All of us are accountable to you for how we live out our lives here on earth. Charlie is now with you, and he will give an account of what he did while he walked among us. As you have told us in Hebrews 9, verse 27, "And just as each person is destined to die once, and after that comes judgment." Well, Charlie Kirk and the man who shot him will stand before you; Charlie to receive his reward, his murderer to receive his condemnation. Your son died for both of these men and for each one of us. Our eternal destiny and theirs depends upon our response to your offer of redemption. Statistics reveal that one out of every one person dies, and man knows not his time. One day, each one of us will stand before you to give our account for what we have done while we were here. Therefore, on behalf of these men and women who serve you in governing, we ask that they will exercise keen insight, wisdom, and discernment in all that they do. We ask that they will not seek after their own interests, but count the needs of others before their own. May they always rely upon your provision to meet every responsibility of their office, to fill every need throughout every day, and to please you in their motives, priorities, and attitudes. Lord, we thank you for these men and women who willingly put on the mantle of public service and make the sacrifices that accompany that service. May they sense your hand upon their lives and always seek to please you in every thought, word, and action. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. Okay, do we have a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
Can move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pass three zero. All right, next we have recognition and presentation. No, no, I'm sorry. We have approval of the agenda with the changes on page four. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda with the changes on page four?
I'll make the motion that we approve the agenda with the changes on page four.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pass three zero. Next, we have recognitions and presentations. First is the proclamation for the library card signup month. Did Melanie Holes want to speak? There she is. Come on up.
Good evening. Thank you for your time this evening. Every September across the country is a library card signup month, and the theme for this year is "One Card: Endless Possibilities," which is a reminder that libraries are for everyone, no matter your age, background, or goals. Whether you're diving into a new hobby, searching for your next great read, brushing up on tech skills, or helping your child succeed in school, it all starts with a library card. And so, we have a proclamation for you all this evening, and as I was reading through it earlier, each of these points are so salient today and in this county. Whereas libraries are foundational to education, imagination, and opportunity, offering everything from early literacy programs to digital tools that support lifelong learning and personal growth; whereas libraries welcome all people, serving as inclusive and accessible community hubs that connect individuals across cultures, generations, and experiences; whereas libraries curate collections and design programs that reflect the diversity of the population they serve, ensuring equitable access to information, technology, and culture for all; whereas libraries help individuals navigate life's challenges by providing trusted information, digital access, job search support, and connections to essential services; whereas libraries contribute to thriving local economies by equipping job seekers, entrepreneurs, students, and creators with tools and training to succeed; whereas in times of both crisis and calm, libraries and their staff remain steadfast in supporting and strengthening their communities; whereas library resources help households save money, reduce waste, and make sustainable choices all through the simple power of a shared public good; whereas a library card opens doors to endless possibilities from books and technology to lifelong learning and imagination. Now, therefore, it be resolved that the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim September 2025 as Library Card Signup Month in Cabarrus County, North Carolina, and encourage all residents to sign up for a library card and explore the endless possibilities it offers.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions? All right, can we have a motion to accept the proclamation?
I'll make the motion to accept the proclamation as presented.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pass three zero.
Thank you, and thank you for your continued support of our libraries in this county.
Thank you so much for all you do. All right, next would be informal public comments. Oh, I forgot my fair people. That's right. My last-minute ad. I'm excited to hear y'all. All right, we're going to have a presentation for the county fair. Come on up.
Give a second to that slide deck. So, we, the communications team, put together a slide presentation of some great shots that were taken, you know, a lot by Michael Anderson, who we really appreciate being out there the whole week this year, so it was great. So, and there's some others that I think got weaved in there from some of my friends, I believe, so you'll see those in a second. But Courtney Y. and I are here tonight to report on the completion of our nine-day county fair. We, Court and I, attended nearly every hour of this year's fair, mostly amongst our guests, so we were able to really get a good feel of what was going on and what was happening for our fair. We were preparing a more extensive fair report, but we thought it was important to get in front of you right now to give you some, the citizens and the commissioners, some feedback and an update on where we are. So, how this journey started for me is when I was voluntold that I was going to be the admins representative to the fair. The first thing I did was meet with Courtney, who likes kissing pigs, apparently, and so... but what we decided was I was going to lean on my logistics and leadership experience from my time in the military, and then Courtney was going to use her extensive firsthand agricultural experience she gained as a second-generation farm owner. And our goal was to make the fair something Cabarrus County would be proud of. Based on attendance, comments from fair attendees, and the positive social media comments, we're happy to report that this year's fair was a success. I'm going to highlight three areas to, you know, to kind of highlight that success. First, attendance. Attendance was definitely up. We definitely broke 50,000 folks on property this year, so we're very excited about that. Show Pro, our gate and parking contractor, said the first night was the most parking that they had ever seen for that location, so we filled it all the way up to Highway 49. And then on the last night, we were so packed that we were turning folks away. We had no parking, and we're pretty sure the fire marshal had set a limit at the gate. The rodeo was a complete success. We certainly broke even for the amount of money that we paid Southern Rodeo versus the ticket sales, but most importantly, attendees were thrilled. People, people said the rodeo gave them a reason to come back to the fair, and they haven't been in years or reasons to come in the first place. Robin Brooks, the owner of Southern Rodeo, and the closest thing to a true cowboy I've ever met, said, "Could not believe the success we had in our first year. He really didn't expect us to draw that many people." I believe Court had a bet running with his son Josh that we were going to sell out one of the nights. Unfortunately, we did not quite hit that, but we came pretty close, and we're very proud of it. Thirdly, our entries for the livestock competitions shows increased. Beef cattle show nearly doubled this year. It was importantly, important to Courtney and the fair board that our county's agricultural roots truly be the center, center of the fair and bring honor to our farmers. We brought livestock shows from somewhere in the back to the front and center in the arena and the participants, and the audience were thrilled. We believe this is a great start, and it's only getting better. One of the issues that we had was one we anticipated, and I mentioned it a moment ago, parking. I called it, there was one thing that kept me up at night, and I told them on a daily basis, "The only thing I'm worried about right now is parking," and it came true. We ran out. But we're working on that for next year. There is no question that this, we could not have been as successful as we were without all our volunteers who gave their time, their talent, and their creativity. We have several of our volunteers here tonight and members of our fair board, and I just want to thank them publicly that we could not have put this fair on without them. This is truly a community fair, and I'm very proud to be a part of it. I'd also like to make a special recognition for Jonathan Weaver and his communications team. They told the world that Cabarrus County was having a fair this year, and everyone knew it. We have so many great comments about their coverage, and we will be submitting them for awards for the fair association. I know the board wants, is excited to get more information in all of the great numbers from the success of this fair, but we need to meet with our finance team and accumulate all of that and make sure all the bills are paid before we come before you and start throwing out numbers. So, if there is any specific information that you'd like, you know, please let me know, and we'll get back to you, but we plan on being back in front of you soon.
Thank you, but I'd like to stand up and let everybody give your whole crew round of applause.
Thank you for being out there so much. Commissioner Jones, we really appreciate your presence. We felt your support.
For next year.
Thank you.
Is it okay if I make a comment?
Yes, please do.
I'm going to try to do this without getting a little teary, but the fair was very important to solidify the community, and I've never seen a fair like we had this past week. And the people, the fair committee, all of the posts that were out there for Jonathan and his team to get this out there, Courtney, Todd, Marvin, Chris Meesmer, who is not here, but we still know that he had a huge part in this. Barbara String did a lot to organize all of this. I am just so incredibly grateful, and I know that there, you know, we didn't know what this was going to be. We had no idea, but to see it come to fruition and the hard, hard work that came from all of this was just an incredible blessing, and I thank everyone from the county who allowed us to be able to make this happen again for our community. Last week especially, we needed community, and so that was a huge piece of what we were able to do. So, I just, I thank you so much for all of your hard work, the tireless, sleepless nights, the blood, sweat, and tears, all of it. We are truly grateful to you all very much, so thank you.
Anyone else? All right, now we're going to go to informal public comments. When you signed up on your yellow card, you were given a copy of our public comments policy. I want to highlight a few things in that before we begin. The board has adopted a public participation policy that provides reasonable rules on how the public can have their voice heard by their leaders. It's very important that we hear you, but it's very important we do it in a very respectful manner as well. So, these guidelines and rules you need to follow as you come up here. So, look them over before you come up here and make sure you're familiar with them. Under the policy, the board welcomes all viewpoints. However, speakers must be respectful and observe proper decorum. Speakers are free to discuss substantive concerns of public interest in their performance, but irrelevant personal insults and attacks are not allowed. Please do not identify or review personal information about a minor. Do not use any of their names, first, last, any reference to them that can identify them, unless you got written permission from their parents and you have provided that to us. Speakers must register with the clerk by filling out a yellow card before speaking. Speakers usually have up to three minutes. You can get a copy of the full public participation policy from the clerk, so if you filled out one of those cards, you should have received it already. Give you a little bit about our procedures and how we're going to enforce this. You come up here, we want to hear what you have to say. If we feel you're going left of this policy in any way, we'll stop you, remind you of the policy, and give you an opportunity to either sit down, review the policy, and come back up and finish your comments, or if you can proceed without violating it any further, you're welcome to proceed from that point. This enforcement's policy is not to intimidate you and not to cause you not to speak what you need to. It's important to hear every single one of you. Everyone has something that's important to say, and we believe that, but we have to maintain respect and decorum in this proceeding, and that way you can do it. The one other thing is when other people are speaking, your time to speak is when you have your yellow card and you're up here. When other people are speaking, you must remain quiet in the audience. It's two reasons. First of all, people want to hear what this person has to say, and we need to respect their time and their ability to say it. Second of all, there's many people watching this at home. If we have everyone talking in the audience, they cannot hear what the person has to say, and you're doing a very disjustice to that person. So, I hope everybody can follow those rules. We have no issues, and we proceed, and I'd love to hear everything you have to say. Thank you. We may begin.
First up is Jerry Anderson.
Jerry Anderson, Kannapolis, North Carolina. I don't know if you know anything about free speech, but I fought for it, and when you lecture the citizens here, something wrong with the board having to lecture the citizens to keep us straight. Something wrong with this board. There's only three board members here today. You want to hear, people? I had Mr. Schu here try to gag my story that y'all gave us. Wanted to gag me. That should be a dismissal. He's not here anyway.
One second. Like I said in the policy...
And so, go on arrest me or take me out of here.
No, I'm not going to arrest you. Just stop. One second.
What? This is my time.
This is your time. I stopped your time. Listen, it's fine. Just don't attack.
Nobody attacked him.
Don't say, be respectful. That's all I'm saying. I'm going to let you finish.
Mr. Schu is right here. You got his name here.
That's fine. It doesn't matter whether he's here.
I didn't want to say nothing about him, because he's not here.
I understand. Now, the question is, can you proceed without personal attacks, or do you need to go down, sit down, calm down, and read the policy?
If you don't want to hear what I say, you can just stop. It's three minutes.
Tell me what you want to do. You want to continue?
I want to finish my three minutes.
Okay. Just do it within the guidelines.
While we're talking, you told me you was going to check in. You told me to talk. I ain't heard a thing in three months. You checked in on my stuff? You checked in on my stuff? I don't think so. Anyway, Ms. Silfrid, I'm glad, congratulations. Some people say you deserve this to finish out your stay here. Some people say you don't because you've been here during the other two people, that you might be part of the problem. But I know that you answer questions, mountains or beach. How about this? My child was taken. Y'all consider stealing or kidnapping? Say it real fast.
I'm going to ask you to step down, read the policy and I'll let you come back up and finish your minute.
I don't want to talk to you.
Thirty-eight seconds.
Next is Jeter Anderson.
Jeter Anderson. Man, I can't believe this chairman just did that to a veteran. Disrespectful. They don't want to answer questions up here. I just want you to listen for yourself.
...or something of that nature and if they broke that, then they would be a cease and desist order to prevent people from going out and talking.
Can you please just answer a few questions? No. Mr. Jones, you got time to answer a couple of questions?
No.
Told to leave it alone.
Why?
I cannot find any answers. I was told to leave it alone.
You want to talk to him yourself because he didn't tell you what was going on, Lori?
Several people served and was told to leave it alone.
This board is the top of the line. Who's telling people to leave it alone? Who is telling people not to worry about a vulnerable adult that was treated wrong in this county? Who is telling people, this veteran, that, hey, we can't give you answers that you should have had anyway? When a child is removed from your home, he should have had answers about that. Why? What'd y'all want with this child? What'd you do with this vulnerable adult? Why did y'all treat her like she was a competent adult? And who is over y'all? Who is these several people that's telling us to leave it alone? And we do got questions that need answered. We got a lawyer that hijacked the chairman's spot up here. We had a chairman and he just come in and hijacked that spot and he's a lawyer. He's not, he's not a public official that, any kind of public official I've seen. A public official wants to answer your questions. They want to serve you. They want to help you. A lawyer wants to keep you quiet. They don't want you to ask no questions. They'll sit you down. They treat this like it's a courtroom, but it's not. It's where we come for three minutes to give our little peace and you just did the dirtiest thing to a veteran I ever seen, man. Disgusting. I don't like that. Now I know what happened to this child. The way you wanted to take this ownership, this ownership, and you paid the man who was responsible. You paid him off. You paid him, now you're going to stop me from talking?
I stopped your time for a second.
Yeah, you're stopping everybody's time. I come up here for my three minutes.
I understand, but you have to do your three minutes.
Stop interrupting people's speech, man.
Okay. I'm going to ask you to proceed under the guidelines. You still have 45 seconds. Proceed under those guidelines.
Stop interrupting people, man. You need to hear me out and quit playing lawyer up here.
You understand the policy.
You're not a lawyer today.
I'm going to let you continue, but if you violate the policy again, I'm going to have to have you sit down.
Hear me out. If I violate any policy, I'd want you to. But I'm not violating any policy. I'm telling how this county won't answer any questions that need to be answered. Somebody asked a good question to you at the fair. I would like to know too. How could you pay a man that did something like this? What happened to those individuals? Why would you settle with a man like that? Y'all probably don't give a darn about a vulnerable adult. Y'all don't care about them. So if y'all got any vulnerable adults, treat them like normal people, huh? Because this veteran had a question and you interrupted both of us and you should not have done that, man. It proves what kind of person you are.
Thank you.
Next is Amy Palacio.
I'm Amy Palacios from Harrisburg. The Bible says everything done in darkness will come to light. The plans of the enemy will fail. There's a lot of bad things that have happened over the last month, from the firing of a county manager, Sean Newton, that shouldn't have happened, to a stabbing of a Ukrainian woman in Charlotte, to an assassination of Charlie Kirk. And even in the last month, my two children were on a bus at Hickory Ridge Middle School that started smoking and they had to use three different buses to get them home. I know today, there's many other people here in this room that are upset over Sean Newton being fired. He was the first person to sit in that position and actually listen to the problems that were going on, to actually care about the issues that were going on. A lot of families that were missing their children through the trafficking of the system here, like the Hucks and the Campbells, they received their children back during the time that he was in position, listening to these stories of being in court for three years at a time and not having time with their children. People are reporting that Sean Newton got you guys out of a $6 million debt, but yet you guys are paying a $4 million, I don't know, lawsuit to Mike Downs. Well, I think that $4 million would have been better served to buy school buses for the children or to the teachers or something else. I'm not even sure why. If you can just outright fire someone like Sean Newton, why is Mike Downs getting $4 million for being out? None of it makes any sense. There is a lack of mental health assistance. I mean, I agree with the buses that you guys are going to also talk about here, but there's an oversight on mental health being an issue with domestic violence. And they even have, in my case, in both Cabarrus County and Mecklenburg County, just overlooked the issues of mental health. Anyone that does know my story, I had my own ex-husband threaten to kill me on the stand and one of the judges in this county gave me a $70,000 order to pay him a year later. He was in jail for six months, beat me up, beat my sister up, had two convictions of federal assault on a female, also beat up a police officer while he was in jail. But yet I was made to pay him $70,000 and his lawyer, Jay White. I'm still in court every couple of weeks. Threatened if I don't pay money, I'll go to jail.
Thank you.
Next is Lori Stadler.
Good evening. My name is Lori Stadler and thank you for the opportunity to be able to speak to everyone here tonight. I began attending these meetings when Mr. Jones was sworn in, so I have not been coming long, okay? From the start, I was surprised by the tone and apparent lack of mutual respect between the commissioners and the members of the public. Over time, I've seen more tension than collaboration and that concerns me deeply. In light of the recent events, particularly the tragic assassination of Charlie Kirk, I believe it's more important than ever that we choose a better path. Division and hostility are not the direction we should be heading, especially in our own community. I also watched the video from the county fair and I'm not here to take sides. I do think we would all benefit from taking a step back and focusing on where we can find common ground. Respect must be a two-way street. Mr. Jones, I do believe you should have been approached with more civility. At the same time, as a public official, you hold a position of trust and responsibility and that includes treating every citizen with dignity, even when you're faced with frustration or disagreement. In that instance, you were a public official first and your reaction was a personal one. It's clear that the tensions are rising. We don't move forward unless there's a shared commitment to mutual respect and open communication. Without that, we risk deepening the divide. I also want to be honest. It often feels like some commissioners vote without seriously considering the voices of those they represent. That may be within your right, but I urge you to remember that your positions are held in service to the people. Mr. Jones, while you were appointed rather than elected, I hope you at least feel an obligation to the community you serve. For those who are elected, it's essential to listen to your constituents, even when their views differ from yours. When dialogues break down, the consequences can be severe. What we saw last week was a stark reminder of what happens when we stop listening to each other. I'm deeply concerned by the lack of genuine engagement in these meetings and I believe that must change. At the end of the day, we're all human beings made in the image of God and we all deserve to be heard and respected. Regardless of our roles, beliefs or frustrations, we share a common interest in the well-being of our county. Let's move forward with that in mind. I'm asking both commissioners and the community members here tonight to try to work together. Let's make a sincere effort to improve how we communicate and how we treat each other because this is not working. Personally, I'm ready to be part of the solution. If there's an opportunity to create or join a committee or group focused on improving communication and fostering productive dialogue, I'm happy to volunteer. If anyone else is interested, please feel free to speak to me at the end of the meeting. I don't know what that means. Members of the commission are welcome as well. Thank you for your time and service and I thank everybody who shows up here and puts the time in. I'm done.
Thank you so much.
Next is Chris Cranston.
Eighteen months ago, I first came in here to question my more than double property tax value assessment. I quickly realized only one rep seemingly thought like myself. I have to accept partial blame. For 30 years, I turned a blind eye to my civic responsibility, allowing the last people in the county that I would choose to fill my absence and to lay claim they are representing me and my values. I am seeking more involvement from citizens and more transparency from our local government. I'm going to share a quick few things about myself and please do not pity me or think of me as a victim. I share for transparency and clarity. For the permanent record, never once have I chosen violence as a solution to the problems in my life. Despite my tone, my perceived aggression and/or approach, I have zero ill will or any desire for physical harm on any elected official. Period. Anyone who says otherwise is lacking of discernment or just plain lying. When I got the call, my brother Sidney Charles Cranston Jr. was missing, I did not even once choose or think violently. Staying in the same home as the man that I believed and eventually proved was his murderer, I never chose violence. I am sad to see my representatives, their spouses and children smear my name as they incite violence upon me and mine and I ask they stop. Please condemn the death threats sent to my wife for maximum effect. The calls for the seizure of my possessions and freedom by your supporters and children are shameful. My questions are not violence. Cameras are not going to harm elected officials. Cabarrus County citizens need not to be bothered or care about all of this nonsense. The story must be shifted back to the issues at hand. My motivation and/or passion stems from knowing what it's like to wonder where the next meal comes from, wondering as a father if I will come up with a rent in order to provide a roof over my then-young and growing family's heads. I ask we leave these distractions behind and focus. Why was we the people's court date canceled just hours prior to arguments given? Why did we simply pay Mike Downs and pay even more than requested as reported in the news without an argument? Why did Sean Newton get fired? Why am I treated with such hostility for seeking answers? We cannot be bullied into silence. It's plain to see there's never been less transparency, less professionalism or understanding from leadership since the arrival of the clerk of court, Bill Baggs' appointment, Mr. Jeff Jones. How weak are the elected officials who would choose an unelected man to lead them knowing he's never received a vote or even set foot in chambers? How desperate are they to keep power from the people's will? We need our own turning point here in Cabarrus County. Enough of the businesses first, county employees second, and taxpayers dead last mentality. Thank you, the Lord, for the ability to look anger right in the face and fear no evil. Thank you to Larry Pittman, Laura Blackwell and the 57,000 voters who cast their ballot for her. Please do not leave these two grassroots, God-fearing representatives hanging out to dry. Show up and fight, fight, fight with your voice and vote. God bless our representatives, our county, and may God bless you. P.S. Congrats to David Thrift and his engagement from his favorite taxpayer.
Thank you.
Next is Matthew Ford.
This past week, at the Cabarrus County Fair, the Firefighters Association and Cabarrus County Chapter of the North Carolina Burn Children's Fund proudly hosted a booth dedicated to public safety education. Visitors received hands-only CPR training, fire extinguisher demonstration and training and learned about car seat safety among other vital topics. The county fire department sent personnel throughout the week to assist with this public education efforts and support their ISO inspections through public education. This is a key component to their ISO inspections and those departments got credit for the nights they helped man the booth. The students from the Concord High School Public Safety Academy were out there all week teaching the public CPR, fire extinguishers and various other aspects of the fire service. They had over 500 participants in the Touch the Truck Experience, over 200 educated on proper use of fire extinguishers and over 300 in hands-only CPR. All this was provided by Concord High School students in the PSA. Many parents expressed interest in the Public Safety Academy, which is open to all Cabarrus County students. Raising awareness to this program is key to growing the next generation of emergency responders. Also, at the last minute, with help from the fair staff, we were able to put on a September 11th memorial service. The vendors, and I can't stress this enough, the fair vendors actually postponed their operations around us, including the Paul Bunyan Experience moved their show up 30 minutes to not interfere with this memorial service. On behalf of the Firefighters Association, the Burn Children's Fund and the Public Safety Academy at Concord High School, we would like to thank the Cabarrus County Commissioners, the county staff, Courtney, the fair director, Todd, Anita, Barbara, Representative Meesmer when he was here helping with the fair, the entire fair committee and staff for being able to put on this event this year and allowing us to be part of it. We are grateful for the opportunity to serve, educate and honor our community and we look forward to returning next year. And on a personal note, I have not been to the fair in years. I found it disappointing and not worth the time to take my family out there. But those two gremlins you keep hearing hiding under the bench. I brought them tonight to show you this was their first fair. They lived last week off of daily corn dogs and told their teacher, I'm going to the fair tonight. Every night they wanted to go out there, even if it was just to work that booth. We thank you so much. The fair was very enjoyable this year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Wesley Honeycutt.
I saw a video earlier where Kelly said that she liked her steak well-done and I'm here to publicly oppose that. I'm just kidding. I want you all to notice something. Everybody just laughed together, okay? And unity's been a talk of the county for a while and I'm going to be honest with you. We ain't there yet and I don't know that we've gotten any closer since you got here, Mr. Jones. I know we hadn't had a chance to sit down yet. You did reach out to me early on, then you had a trip, then I've had some trips and then there's been a lot going on in this county. I still want to sit down with you sometime. I'll sit down with anyone. Commissioner Workman, I talked to you a little bit after the last meeting, but the thing that I want to talk to you all about in regards to unity is we've got to get back to the place where we debate ideas and we stop disliking people. Anybody in here that you don't like, you can probably find one thing that you agree with them on. But what I saw happen here a couple of meetings ago when we were talking about the EDC and reducing the max grant from 85% to 80%, I didn't think that was much of a consolation. I didn't think it was much of a compromise. And then after some comments were made here, Commissioner Workman, you removed your motion to do that. And Commissioner Jones, I watched you. That was an opportunity to have a cooler head and say, listen, I know that things have gotten out of hand here, but this is what we said we were going to do. But you just let that go on. And what that felt like to me, and I told you this, is, well, if you peasants don't like that, then I'm not giving you anything. And that's not how representatives govern. And that's not how representatives govern. That's how tyrants govern. That's how warlords govern. That's how dictators govern. And I get it. Like, I can't say that I wouldn't have an emotional response to stuff. People have said some ridiculous things about me on the internet, too, and I'm not even sitting where you guys are. I get it. We're human. I don't expect you guys to not be human. But we've got to get back to the point where we debate ideas. And part of the reason that people are mad is because they don't feel like they're being heard. You stress the importance of being heard. I've come up here for months. I think that I have done my best to bring appropriate decorum up here, and I don't see a whole lot of fruit from that, to be honest with you. I get why people are mad. When I see things like these constant stories that just aren't quite as they seem, I looked into the $2 million that were lost a few years ago, and it was reported in the news that the scammer only used an email address that was one letter different than a legitimate one. Well, that's not true. It was way different. It was branch-associate instead of branch group. It was the exact example you would see on a phishing training to not do that. But even that, it's like, why do we keep changing the details? That's about the ding. I do know what that means, but I look forward to chatting with you more later. But thank you.
Thank you.
I would just note that at this point, we would come back to Mr. Anderson, but I do see he has left for his minute and 38 seconds that you offered.
He's left. Okay. Thank you. All right. We will close public comment. We'll close public comments. All right, let's move on to the consent agenda. Motion to approve the items on the consent agenda.
So move.
All in favor, say aye. Passes 3-0. Then we move on to new business. All right, first we have Elise Pooh. Is she here today? Oh, there she is.
Good evening, commissioners. This is a very quick request. We have a resolution that was approved in 2023. It's 2023-31. We just need to extend the date on it from 2024 to 2026 so that we can continue to utilize the funds for opioid settlements. Not changing the amount, just the date till the end of this fiscal year.
Do I have any questions on that? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we extend the date for the opioid settlement.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Pass 3-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is the ambulance receivable write-off, Mr. Jimmy Lynch.
Good evening. I'm accompanied tonight, and she can come up if, when needed, Ms. Tanya Ligon, our financial analyst, and she's the main liaison between us and our third-party billing consultants, EMS management consultants. Just a quick, y'all have been provided some description of our billing processes through Ms. Sifford, and just a quick rundown of it. Public 911 EMS is obligated to transport if a patient has a medical concern. We're not the ones on scene to judge whether it's legitimate or not. If they call for our service, we transport them. In many cases, they may be unresponsive. They may be solo by themselves. It may be hard to get identifiers to do the billing process. We work really hard with the hospital and different means to get all that. Bottom line, public 911 EMS is not profitable. As advertised, our billing and collections rate remain around 72% annually. That pretty much attests for the 2.2 or 2.3 million we're writing off this year is basically that other 27%. We do have clients that abuse us at times. That is somewhat peaks around weather extremes, extreme heat or extreme cold. They'll be simply looking for a warm place with a warm meal and come up with a medical complaint, and we have to transport them. And we pretty well know their repeat offenders typically can happen multiple times in a shift. In a 12-hour shift, we can transport somebody two or three times, and it just is what it is. We can't leave them on the streets. When we do get a complaint or get a call that turns out not to be a legitimate 911 service, the sheriff's department has been very gracious in assisting us and the other local law enforcement agencies. But typically, when we get in misuse of 911 system, we do utilize the sheriff's department because they have county-wide jurisdiction, and we will charge those folks. To be totally transparent, that also accomplishes their goal of getting a warm place to stay and meals in a day, you know, three meals a day. And also, it's sometimes perceived as not much of a deterrent either. Our collections are 58% in the first year, which I think that has been provided to you. It goes down to like 15% the next year and then continues to fall. What is brought to you every four years to be written off is simply a clearing of the paperwork. It doesn't mean we cease to try to collect those through many collection avenues. We just had one recently that was a lottery winner, we assume, but there was $248 that was collected, and it was an old debt that was, I don't know the specific date, and I'm not going to say I do, but it's very likely may have been in the 2.2 or 2.3 we're asking to write off tonight. But that's a very brief description of our billing processes. We certainly can provide more if needed, because we don't like to do that either. But bottom line, public 911 EMS service is certainly not-for-profit. Any questions or anything I can add to that?
Thank you for the information you provided. I did have a question, and you and I have kind of talked about this in the past. The company that we utilize third-party for collections, I've heard multiple complaints from folks regarding being able to get in touch with them. I just didn't know if you had any updates on that or if that's, it's been several months, so I didn't know if anything had changed regarding that.
No, absolutely it hasn't. We monitor those, Ms. Ligon, to be specific, monitors those very closely. I won't say they are common concerns, but we have heard them as well. I will say, over the years of COVID, and I don't mean to come up with an excuse of that, but they face the same staffing challenges that everybody else did. And to get someone in and onboard them on the legalities of medical billing is quite an endeavor. So it has gotten better. Out of the 18,000 calls we bill a year, there are minimal, but we want to hear every one, and we do, and we address every one individually. There are different, it's complex, there's different reasonings behind each one, and sometimes the stories we get when we start researching and looking at notes are maybe not always accurate either. But we do take those very seriously, and we do address them one by one, and I appreciate your question on that.
Any other questions? All right. We have a motion to authorize the fire department, finance department, to write off the outstanding ambulance receivable balance.
So move.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose. Pass 3-0. Next, we have Mr. Doug Hall concerning our Lamar lease. Oh, I missed Jonathan, didn't I? Oh, Jacob, I see. Jacob Thompson with the Fire Marshal Mount Mitchell Fire Department.
Good evening, commissioners. So Mount Mitchell's with me tonight. Chief Harrington's here to speak on behalf of the department. So kind of two items here. One is our contract requires that fire departments get approval for apparatus purchases over $50,000. As a matter of transparency moving forward, what we intend to do is have those departments come in front of you all, speak about those apparatus purchases so that you know about those ahead of time, and then choose to direct me or not to move forward on issuing those certificates of need. Every once in a while, when we deal with this, lenders request that there's a document signed on behalf of the county that pretty much states that the department's in good standing before they move forward with financing. So that's kind of the second part of this. So Chief Harrington's going to speak to their purchase, the apparatus they're planning on purchasing, speak through some of the issues and things that they've encountered in the last year, some of the things that they've done to make some changes in the department, improve their operations, both administratively and operationally.
Thank you. So the reason that Mount Mitchell Fire Department's looking at purchasing a new truck is we have two engines currently serving our district as far as our structural fires and vehicle accidents and stuff of that nature. Our lead engine is 18 years old, which was bought new in 2007. Our second engine is a 1998, which is 27 years old, and we are currently the third fire department in North Carolina that has had this truck. We're looking to replace it with a 2025 Fouts Brothers engine to replace our engine to this bin that is 27 years old. Some of the issues that we have come up with on this truck, the last repair was $13,000, and it took us six months to find a part to fix it due to the age of the truck. Some of the other things that we faced this past year, we totally replaced almost all of our board members due to all of them walking out. We successfully went through those operations and made those changes. Some of the other issues that we are working through is response issues, having individuals that do not have a handheld radio to move allocation of radios around to help cover that, to save with our second dispatches and stuff that are over the five-minute mark from the county. Any other questions y'all have for me?
Since 2022, when I took office, Mount Mitchell has had some issues making their response times. And so has your response improved because you're asking us for a truck, but yet for at least the last several years, other departments have been picking it up? So if we can't get a person to the station to drive the truck, does it make sense to buy the truck? But it sounds like you're making improvements in that area.
Yes, we are making improvements. In the past six months, I would say we've only missed two calls.
Literally was going to be almost the exact same question, so thank you. Just out of curiosity, how often do you guys utilize Squad 410?
We utilize them every chance we get.
Like, all the time?
Every chance we get. We may turn them around if we get to the call and see that we don't need the extra hands, but we do use them quite a bit.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Is the lead time still about two years, 18 months to get a truck?
Our lead time on this one is actually by the end of the year. It is not considered a custom truck. It's a custom truck, but it's not a custom truck. It's a spec chassis, and then the bed is custom. So we could potentially get this truck by the end of the year.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion to approve the written agreement?
Make a motion to approve.
All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed. Passes 3-0.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Hall, it's time for the Lamar lease.
All right, thank you. We discussed this, if it pleases the board, at the work session, and on page 345 of your PDF agenda, we have the language of paragraph 14 that we had discussed at the work session, and I think you all wanted some more time to review that. I sent that proposed paragraph 14, which was language that Ms. Sifford and I had worked on with Lamar's representative and Lamar's attorney. I sent it, a blind copied it to all five of you so we wouldn't violate any open meetings laws. I've received comments back from two commissioners. The requests were to add a further prohibition on political advertisements and then also a further prohibition on gambling advertisements. And both of those were added to this paragraph 14. So Lamar's representative and attorney agreed to add those additions that the two board members requested. So this is coming back before you tonight to consider authorizing the chairman to execute this lease. I'll be happy to revisit any of the other terms, but just to kind of recap, it's a 10-year total life of the lease, $7,500 per year rent, $75,000 total. And this is, again, for everyone's benefit. This is a billboard that already existed at the ACN property. When you bought the property, you began receiving prior to lease payments on this billboard when you bought the property, and now that lease has ended, and Lamar's asking to renew
So all those amendments were agreed to that we sent to them?
That's correct. That's correct. Those are the only two, you know, most of paragraph 14, as you see it here on page 345, was before you at the work session, and then because that had been kind of a last-minute addition to it, I think we all agreed you all should have some more time to consider it. And again, the two additions that I received, Lamar did agree to add both of those.
All right. Any other questions? Do we have a, we have to, no, we can make a motion to accept that lease agreement?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose. Next is our DHS transportation, community transportation grant. Due to the nature of this, we have to hold it open for a public hearing. Does anybody want to make a comment on that grant?
I can if you like. So what this is, is our yearly grant helps cover the admin costs for the transportation department. It requires a 15% county match. The grant's a little under $189,000. Like I said, it covers the admin part for the department.
Do you want to ask some questions? Anybody else? All right. Oh, I thought I did. All right, I'll open the public hearing. Anybody want to speak on this issue? All right, go one, go twice. All right. We will close the public hearing. All right. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve the grant as presented.
All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose. Pass 3-0. All right, next, in your reports, we have, the reports have been provided for everybody to look into there. We still have some vacancies on our website for positions within our different boards and advisory. If you please go to the website and see if there's an opportunity for you there. All right, nothing further there. We'll go to general comments by board members.
I just wanted to point out that the Logan community has made progress towards their National Historic Foundation certification. The Concord Historic Commission approved it. So the next steps are that the National Registry Advisory Committee has to approve it, then it goes to the State Historic Preservation Officer to sign off on it, and then the National Park Service has to sign off for the final. So the Logan community was very proud of that, and I just wanted to bring that up in the general comments. And also, one, sorry. Government 101 that we had, I did not have the email last month to read the names of the people at Afton Ridge that participated, and it was Dominique Clark, Claire Trammell, Jonathan Weaver, Samaya Rashid, Byron Hagler, Melanie Holes, Deborah Schmitzer, and Kelly Sifford, and Macy Andrews. So those are the people that actually put on and participated for the Government 101 that we held at Afton Ridge. I just didn't have the names with me last month.
So a couple of things. I do want to remind you all that we do have Creek Week coming up next week for soil and water, so please go on their website and take a look at all of the exciting events that we do have coming up for that. I also wanted to mention that the Youth Commission has started back again. I went to their meeting downstairs just before this one, and we will be having them join us, thankfully, back up on the dais as we move forward with our join us thankfully back up on the dais as we move forward with our meetings. And then I just have to say thank you so much to everyone that came that tossed balls to get me in the dunk booth at the fair on Thursday. We were able to raise about $400 for the animal shelter, so I'm so grateful that we were able to do that. I also have to thank EMS for giving me some blankets because I was about to freeze to death out there, so thank you so much for that as well. And tonight, we are going to highlight Gingerail and Lucy, who are our animals for this month.
Welcome back once again to the Cabarrus County Animal Shelter. I'm Commissioner Laura Lindsay at one of my favorite places. Let me introduce you to some of the babies that are looking for a new family. This is Gingerail. She is a sweet five-month-old pit bull who's been at the shelter for about a month. She's incredibly playful and excited to meet new people, and she is looking for a new family to call her very own. This is Lucy. Lucy is a three-year-old calico. She's been at the shelter since July. She is a sweet mom who has been in foster care and is now looking for somebody to take care of her. Please come and meet Lucy today. Thank you for joining us here at the Cabarrus County Animal Shelter once again. If you are interested in either of these babies or maybe another one, please don't hesitate to call the shelter at 704-920-3288.
No other comments up here. I need a motion to go into closed session to consult with attorney, including pending litigation to James Campbell versus Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners and Steve Morris in his official capacity as board chairman, and Sandra Wallace versus Cabarrus County, as well discuss economic development, acquisition of real property, and personnel as authorized by North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A, 3, 4, 5, and 6. Do I have a motion?
So move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Pass 3-0. We are in closed session.